City Mayor, Captain Mayor and Council's Special Crime Meeting February 2nd, 2018. If you rise with threads of allegiance led by me, Mr. Trippett, be so kind to do the implication, we greatly appreciate it.
...special crime meeting February 2nd, 2018.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today. Father, we thank you for our many blessings that you've given us. We thank you, God, for our city, for our community, the people that make it up. Lord, as we convene in this meeting, we lift up the mayor and city council. We ask you to give them wisdom as they debate the matters that are before them, Lord. And Father, we just ask these things in your name. Amen.
At this time, I'd like for approval for agenda items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask you to add one item, and that would be an update from Mr. Conley about the noise ordinance. That would be item six.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the addition of discussion of the noise ordinance.
Second.
It's up to second. A motion in second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Can't tell me, because I can't figure it out either. I'm going to be out my bed. So much for my turf and theater. Oh, okay. This is down to Resolution 01-218. Mr. Conley?
Thank you, Mayor Hollins. The first resolution that you're considering today essentially does two things, one of which is what I would consider more of sort of a clarification-type housekeeping item. The other is more of a larger policy issue. Time to time, I get together with city staff, and we look at the ordinance, and we talk about some changes that we can clarify some things. And the first of those is as it relates to how we calculate density. This is something that's pretty universal, but we needed to go ahead and make clear in our ordinance that making a density calculation, that the only thing you include is developable property. Things like wetlands, floodplains, et cetera, don't count for purposes of calculating the density. And the reason for that, obviously, is, you know, you don't necessarily want somebody to go out and buy a hundred-acre tract, ninety-eight acres of which is floodplain, and then cram all the remaining density on the two acres. So, that I consider to be more sort of a clarification. The second part is the more substantive part. In talking to staff, there's a recognition that we have invested a lot of money in the Green Belt, which, for those of you that aren't familiar, that's the eighteen-mile recreation trail surrounding the city. There is recognition that in addition to the existing trail, the vision moving forward is that you're going to have a lot of other parts of the city that are going to be connected to the trail through spurs and otherwise. So, this proposal is designed to look at higher-density residential developments, specifically multifamily developments and townhomes, and require those higher-density developments that are either within 1,000 feet of the Green Belt to connect to the Green Belt, or if they're not within 1,000 feet of the Green Belt, that the developer will commit to building at least 1,000 feet of Green Belt spur towards the nearest portion of the Green Belt, with the city retaining the option to complete the connection if it desires to do so. So, that would apply to townhomes. It would also apply to multifamily, and again, the theory being that those are residential developments of such densities that the economies of scale make it more palatable, it makes more sense for them to have that obligation to connect to the Green Belt, or at least get close to it. The other thing it does is it requires them to install playgrounds, which meet city specifications, and would have to be approved by the Carrollton Parks and Recreation Department. And it also requires them to have sidewalks within the development, and to connect those sidewalks to sidewalks outside of the development. It was presented to the planning commission at the January meeting, and the planning commission recommended approval, and it was unanimous.
Is there any discussion?
I've got a question. Was there any discussion about connecting Green Belt spurs in a similar fashion to single-family developments? Ideally, what we're looking at is increasing density in our downtown and surrounding areas without expanding the city a whole lot. And I'm wondering, was there any discussion of ensure, to help ensure that, or to make sure that any other sorts of developments that do come into the city do also install another spur or connection point to it?
Single-family developments?
Yeah, like a neighborhood or anything like that that's coming through. Would there be that sort of, is that, just to clarify, within this?
It is not. This is specifically limited to multifamily developments and townhomes. And at least in the discussions that I had, there was some discussion about including single-family. But it got to be, there was a question about, would you do all single families, or just single families of certain densities, or single families that exceed, you know, a certain size? And it just became a little bit unwieldy, and I think there was some concern about whether you would have the density of development with those single-family developments to warrant something like that.
Just to clarify, for single-family developments, right now, they do require sidewalk connectivity around the neighborhood. That would be something I'd like for the city to look at in terms of, just in terms of future growth, looking at how we can connect those neighborhoods to those spurs, because they're going to want them at some point. If we can look towards doing that on the front end, that would be beneficial.
Good point.
Anybody else got anything they want to throw into this? Are we looking to vote on this issue today?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 01-2018 UDO amendment.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor of approving Resolution 01-2018? Please raise your hand. The motion carries. Number two, Resolution 02-2018. Chuck?
This came up a couple of meetings ago. If you recall, we had a property owner that wanted to do an auto racking yard. And in looking at the ordinance, it turns out that you need both five acres to do either a junkyard, or an auto racking facility, or some combination of the two. Staff thought that, at least as it relates to auto racking facilities, that a five-acre minimum was a little bit excessive. So, this change is simply to say that we still have the five-acre minimum requirement for junkyards, and again, they're limited to industrial zonings anyway. Still have five-acre minimums for junkyards, but if it's truly just an auto racking facility, a place where they're storing automobiles on a short-term basis to be recovered by the owner, then the minimum lot size is two acres. And so, that's the change. And it was presented to the planning commission at the January meeting, and it was unanimous recommendation of approval, and they had to.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Did this come out of a request from a gentleman that came to a council match meeting? Well, good work on trying to accommodate that.
All in favor, no, a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2-2018 UDO amendment.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Thank you very much. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Resolution 03-2018.
Mayor Hollins, well, I think we probably can do the next two resolutions together, because they're essentially designed to do the same thing. Back in 1997, the city created the municipal court, or at least created the position of city solicitor for the municipal court, and appointed at the time the general solicitor for the county. And since that time, for the intervening twenty years, the general solicitor for the county has also served as the solicitor in our court. We were told by Doug Bassi, who's the current Solicitor General, that he's just frankly too busy, and doesn't feel like he can continue to do both. So, the decision was made to change and have someone else appointed in that capacity. When we looked at it, there actually was a state statute that was adopted back in 2012, which says if you're going to have a city solicitor, then you have to have a resolution and an ordinance that creates the office of the city solicitor. And so, Resolution 03-2018 is the resolution that would create the office of the prosecuting attorney of the municipal court. And then Resolution 04-2018 is essentially a resolution that would appoint Kevin Drummond as the city solicitor for a two-year term. Assuming that these get adopted today, we will then notify the prosecuting attorney's council of the state of Georgia that Mr. Drummond has been appointed as our solicitor.
How was that selected?
Well, I just have, I guess, I have a few questions. One, our charter says we only can hire three individuals: the clerk, city manager, city attorney. So, now, this is a personnel issue to me. It seems like we're surfing, or we're going beyond the authority given to us in our charter, because now we're going to be hiring a city solicitor. So, that's question number one. Question number two is, when we create this office, is this going to be an employee of the city who will be, who can qualify for city benefits?
The answer to the second question is no. It's not, this person wouldn't be a city employee that can do this on a contract basis with the city, which is essentially the same relationship we have right now with the Solicitor General. As to item, I don't think there's any consistency with the charter, because I think the mayor and council have the right to appoint officers to do things. I mean, we're not required to have a city solicitor. But I don't, I don't think the charter prohibits it. You may not contemplate it, but I don't think it prohibits it. And if we're going to have someone in that position, we do have to follow this process under state law.
It just, I'm not trying to play game of semantics, I know it sounds that way, versus hiring somebody and appointing somebody. Understand that, Chuck? Every, so every two years, you anticipate that the council and mayor will appoint the new, I guess, to me, it seems like it's more of a personnel issue that falls under, that falls on the auspices of the city manager, that he would get to choose who this, who the city attorney is. That's my question. I mean...
The city solicitor.
Yeah, the city solicitor.
Okay. And I think that's fine. What I would, the reason I picked, I picked two years, just because, I mean, it's same logic. They can imagine, if y'all want a different term, that's fine. And you certainly could, yeah, I don't think it changes, I don't think it affects Resolution 03-2018, which creates the office. I probably would have to amend it to specify that if you want the city manager to just designate it, probably needs to be changed.
I'm just, is that... I'm just bringing it to y'all, because we know what the charter says. And it does look like we're actually selecting a personnel, and we can call it appointment, but if you're saying, well, Matt, this is no different than us appointing boards, people to our certain boards and commissions, I understand that logic as well. I'm not trying to make a mountain of them, oh, hell, please. But if that's, if we were to go forward doing this with appointing the city solicitor, that's fine with me. I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention.
Good point.
If I finish with that, because the last thing is, when we appoint, tell me if I'm wrong, everybody we appoint to, like Board of Development of Appeals, or Board of Planning and Zoning, they're not paid. This position is a paid position.
That's right.
So, to me, that is a quasi-employee of the city. Therefore, it's a personnel issue that I would think falls under the responsibility of city manager.
Okay.
That's just my, my opinion.
Except for that I'm employed the city, right?
Except they're not employed by the city, but they're paid. It's just, it's just a bizarre...
But they don't have the benefit, they don't have the benefits.
It's just, it's a bizarre position. I don't know how to categorize it. But we can just move forward. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention.
Well, do you want, I would suggest then, maybe in what is proposed as Section 38-42, the establishment of the office, it says the office of prosecuting attorney of the municipal court is hereby established for the purpose of providing representation of the city of Carrollton matters pertaining to ordinance violations of the city and state defenses enforced when this report is allowed by the Georgia law. The prosecuting attorney for the municipal court shall be a part-time position. And you want to specify there that is appointed by the city manager or is designated?
I'm just, I'm just bringing that to everybody's attention. I'll, I'll listen to anybody. If anybody else has an opinion, I'm just, I'm not taking a position on that, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. I don't really care one way or the other. That's my opinion.
I think from my perspective, we don't, we don't want to change the purview of the city manager and make us responsible in terms of personnel hiring, and, or appointing, whatever verbiage you want to use. I do like, in terms of this sort of a position, that maybe there's some, I don't want to go with nominations or anything like that, but I think an appointment from the city manager is fine, as long as there's a good, healthy discussion between the mayor and council.
And there certainly wasn't this position, so I'm, I'm fine with it either way. If that, if that cleans it up, making an appointment by the city manager...
And as proposed, the ordinance expires for a term of two years. Do you want to, is that okay? Are you fine with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with two years.
Two years is fine with me.
All right. Then my suggestion would be, I'm just reading it quickly, I don't think there's anything else inconsistent, is to, I think the motion could be to adopt Resolution 03-2008, as written, with the exception that Section 38-42 will have at the very end after position, comma, and is appointed by the city manager or is designated.
Is that where we're at?
Yeah, I think so, so.
Good, really.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 03-2018, with the exception to Section 38-42, that I will read, the prosecuting attorney for the municipal court shall be a part-time position, and shall be appointed by the city manager or his designated.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any more discussion? Here we run. All in favor of adopting Resolution 03-2018 with a so, motion, amended motion? Please raise your hand. Motion carries.
And then as it relates to 04-2018, we need to provide something to the prosecuting attorney's council to let them know that Kevin has been appointed. I suppose now that can be simply in the form of a letter, a petition, that says pursuant to the authority given to me under this resolution.
So, we can just skip over it?
Yeah, skip over that.
All right, let's just get down to some more work. Our number five, better work.
In Rio, as you know, for the last several years, we have, well, since I came in '04, we've been working diligently on rehabilitation of the sewer system. Without giving you more information than you want, in here, our flows at the Westwater Plant were 20 million, the basin went overflow. Mike Grant, wish he was here so I could brag on him, has done a fantastic job of working on those leaky lines, and we do, I would say, in the ballpark of a million dollars a year, work on rehabbing our sewer lines. Occasionally, storms will get out of hand, and we'll have overflows, but all in all, we have a very good system, a very tight system, and our flows at the Westwater Plant are in the neighborhood of three million, you say four million, but certainly far down from below what they were. We had a local firm that did this rehab work that does not require trenchless technology, and is pipe bursting, and lining of pipes, and they were bought out. And so, when they were bought out, it ended the open contract that we had with them. We finally got around to putting some projects together and rebidding this work. And there were four projects. Tommy's here to give you detail if you want it. There's some on Rome Street, there's an eight-inch pipe burst and some ten-inch lining. There's a project on North Park and Spring, which is Highway 27, that's 400 feet of 12-inch with some, some open cut in it. On Pearl Street and MLK, there's some eight-inch pipe burst. And on Newton and Highway 166, there's both some eight- and six-inch pipe burst. The total footage on it all is about 3,340 feet. We do an RFP on this work because a lot of the equipment is different, a lot of it is proprietary, and so it's not, all prices are not the same. And so, we, we bid this out as an RFP with a weighted score. We received three bids. One is from IPR at $369,741. One is from RDJE, which is Ronnie D. Jones, at $571,544. And then there was one from a company out of South Georgia called Underground Pipeline and Rehab, and they had a lower price, but they did not turn in any of their work or methodology, and so they really didn't follow the instructions and do the proposal like they were told, so we can't evaluate the work properly. The second-low price in the high score was IPR Southeast. They actually have a local office, because they are who bought out the old company that we used to use. So, we recommend that you award this to IPR Southeast in the amount of $369,741. And again, their score is 9.23 out of a possible 10. And if you want specifics on any of the work, or any of the projects, we have a plan B map we could put up, and be glad to discuss it with you. This is also the kind of project that can, we can move to other areas with it. We've got some work we need to do right away on one of the construction sites, where we have a forest mound, it's going to be very deep, and we need to pipe burst that forest mound, so that's why we'd like to go ahead and approve this today.
Say none. Motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to IPR Southeast for city manager's recommendation.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Chuck, back to you again. Noise ordinance update?
All right. It was a, a resolution to adopt a new ordinance, a new noise ordinance, circulated to y'all at the January meeting. I have since circulated that ordinance to the industry, and I would consider to be sort of the immediate area, which would include Soundwire, OFS, Yachioe, Trident, and Deco Star. I will say that we've received, at least at this point, precious little feedback. The only industry that's commented so far is OFS, and their suggestion was essentially to have it across the board, send it to the noise limit, as opposed to the levels that are in there, which vary depending on the type of receiving property. I am today sending out some letters. We decided to cast the net a little bit broader, and go a little bit further into the industrial park. So, another round of correspondence will be going out to some of the other industry in the area today. But so far, that's the only feedback I've received, and I haven't received any additional feedback from the citizens in the area. So, that's sort of where we are.
Is this something you think we need to act on today, or...
I think that, since we told everybody at the January meeting that it would be the meeting on the 12th, and since we're sending out one more round of information to some other folks, that, I mean, it's been in the paper, it's been on the radio, it's not been any secret, then if you were looking for a recommendation, I would wait until the 12th, just because that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Somebody got anything else somewhere?
I've got a question about the future land use map in that area. Is there, is there any pieces of land in that area that could go, could currently go residential? I think, like, we've got some residents that are in an industrial park.
Right.
And that's, I have no doubt that there is an issue going on, or else it wouldn't be chatted about, but in terms of planning and putting houses next to industry, I wouldn't want to see that continue.
Again, the comp plan update is, is coming up on us, and there's usually a reissuance of the zoning map at that time, and I think that your point is, is an excellent one, and we need to take a good hard look at that zoning map, and, and make sure that it contemplates that, that any of those properties that, that might be too close might need to be considered for a rezoning when that map is reissued.
Talking about the master plan?
I'm sorry?
The master plan?
Yes, sir. I hear no other comments, can I, most way, gentlemen? And gentlemen, just please...
My name's Greg Nowicki, I'm the Assistant General Manager at Deco Star Industries, and we did receive a report about the proposed ordinance. We do have some concerns with it. We've been operating there for 14 years, similar 14 years ago is what we do today. We do have a residential neighborhood immediately behind our facility, which is off of Tacoma Drive. And so, if there is a change that requires a limit of 70 decibels, there could be significant costs to us. And we have certain operations that are just inherent with what we do. We have a compressor that reduces several times an hour in the back of the plant, that can certainly be heard. We've got various raft movement by port trucks. We have water blasting that occurs in that location. We have a compactor that operates 24 hours. We have a grinding operation. So, these are all things that create noise in the back of our plant and have, so it's existed for 14 years. And, you know, to have this ordinance with the ramifications of receiving 70 decibels resulting fines in the municipal court, obviously, we want to be a good neighbor, we want to be a good partner, but we also want to recognize that this has existed for 14 years, and was finally built, and employs 850-plus people, and we want to continue to do that. And we just don't want to set ourselves up to a situation where we can operate and do what we need to do to produce product for our customers.
So, have you gotten back, when did you receive, I guess, the notice?
We received an email on, on January 3rd.
Okay.
If there was a previous one, we'd apologize, we'd acknowledge it, but we did receive January 3rd email, and that prompted us to...
So, you'd like to see it at seventy, or more than seventy, because I think that the way it stays now, Chuck, isn't it?
It's less than that.
It's less than that today.
It's measured not from, from your property, but it's measured from the, the receiving property line.
Yeah.
But, you know, certainly, I'll be glad to talk to you guys about it, and I guess I've sort of become the clearinghouse of, of comments and all the proposed ordinance, so feel free to follow up with me.
Yeah, our property line is right on our property line, right across from that, is residences, so I can understand where, they would hear some of the activities going on in our facility. What we would like an opportunity to do is to measure that noise over, over a week period of time and understand, are we at risk at seventy, or sixty, or sixty-five? What is the risk to us? Again, we want to be a good, you know, good business and family, and we appreciate the same comments, and we also have to look at previous, and those are twenty-four hour operations. We'll, we'll work with you in the next time.
For what it's worth, we've hired a consultant on two different occasions to do seven-day, twenty-four-hour day studies in that park and then in the, in the neighborhood also, and we're going to start a third round of that. I believe Tony said you'd have the monitors Monday, so, or they're shipping Monday, so we should start a third round of that next Wednesday.
Do you think that would be available by February 12th later, or?
We have seven-day studies, so.
Okay, probably not, then they probably won't have analyzed the data by then.